We'll call the Willmore City Council meeting to order for Monday, August 21st, 2017. Roll call.
Mayor Kelvin?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Christensen?
Here.
Schwantes?
Here.
Alvarado?
Here.
Osmus?
Here.
Meskey?
Here.
Plowman?
Here.
Fagerly?
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda. One item we have is a recommendation of a law firm to represent the city in the hospital lease transaction that will be handled by our city attorney, Mr. Robert Scott. Is there anything else for additions or deletions to the agenda? Seen in hearing, none? Consent items?
Move to approve.
Second.
Judy?
On the consent agenda, for approval is the city council minutes of August 7th, planning commission minutes of August 9th, Willmore Municipal Utilities Board minutes of August 14th, application of gambling exempt permit for Pheasants Forever, Kennewa County Number Two, application of gambling exempt permit for Willmore Lakes Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, zoning appeals board mayoral appointment of Christopher Frank, Human Rights Commission mayoral appointment of Osman Jabril, the Barn Theater on sale intoxicating 3.32 liquor license, a resolution to approve the State of Minnesota Airport Maintenance and Operation Grant Contract fiscal years 2018-2019, and to accept the Willmore Lakes Area CVB Board minutes of April 18th, Human Rights Commission minutes of June 20th, Board of Zoning Appeals minutes of August 7th, the accounts payable report through August 16, 2017.
Motion made and seconded to approve the consent items. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Just a minute. Councilmember Plowman. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Meskey?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That roll call motion does pass. Next, we'll have the proposed recommendation of the law firm to represent the city in the hospital lease transaction. Mr. Scott.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as you know, earlier this year, the hospital board entered into a letter of intent with Centra Care, a nonprofit healthcare provider out of St. Cloud, for an affiliation involving the hospital. And under that letter of intent, the parties are now conducting financial and legal due diligence and in the process of negotiating definitive agreements for the affiliation. Because the city is the owner of the hospital, the city will need to be the party that enters into the definitive agreements, which means they will be coming to the city council for the council's approval. In discussing the deal with the city administrator, we agreed that the city should have its own attorney review these agreements to give the city council an independent opinion on whether they, first of all, adequately protect the city's priorities in preserving Rice's role, its central role within the community, and, second of all, whether the terms are fair to the city and reflect the value of the hospital and the assets that it has. And given the complexity of healthcare transactions as a legal practice area, we both agreed that the city should retain a firm that has specialized experience in this field. So with that said, I think you received an update from the city administrator on this a month or so ago, and I agreed to assist with identifying firms that would be good to talk to and making initial contacts with those firms. We quickly discovered, at least I did in talking to other attorneys, that there's a small list of firms in Minnesota that specialize in this area. I'd say there's a half a dozen, half dozen or fewer firms that really have a well-developed healthcare transactions practice area. So from that list, we reached out to four firms. Among those half dozen, I should say, one of them obviously is representing the opposing party in the transaction. Another one is not, but had represented Centra Care in the past. So after reaching out to four firms and having kind of an initial conflicts check with those firms, we selected with the city administrator's consultation, three firms that would be good to speak to further. So last week, we set up conference calls with the mayor, the city administrator, myself, with the three firms, and I should say that I think the city would be in good hands with any of the three firms. They all had very well-developed practice areas in healthcare transactions. They all had attorneys that spend a lot of their time, if not all of their time, representing parties in fairly elaborate healthcare systems transactions. After interviewing the three firms, the mayor, city administrator, myself have compared notes, talked a little bit further, and the recommendation would be that the firm, excuse me, that the city retained the law firm of Cutec Rock. This is a firm that has a presence in Minneapolis with 20-plus attorneys, but their healthcare practice is actually led by an attorney out of their Omaha office. They're a national firm. The attorney, Mr. Cohen, in Omaha, has experience, extensive experience handling the kinds of transactions that is contemplated, I think, for the city with its hospital and Centra It's really, it was an exercise in comparing the firms' relative strengths, because they all, like I said, they all do this, and it was just a matter of who was the city most comfortable with and who had the most experience with the kind of deals that seemed to be taking shape here. So the recommended motion would be that the city retain the law firm of Cutec Rock. The next step, the next recommended step would be, after retaining them, that the council direct the mayor, the administrator, myself, to work with the firm to develop a written scope of work that we would bring back to the council for the council to review and approve by resolution at your next meeting. But by taking the step to retain that firm tonight, you'd be enabling us, I think, to have more detailed and substantive discussions with the firm at this point. One thing I should say about that scope of work, and I think it needs to be very clear, is that, and this is something we emphasized with each of the firms we talked to last week, which is whether they felt comfortable joining a representation of the city where they're going to be part of a larger team. And when I say that, it's not just going to be our firm, as we're going to be involved with some of the procedural requirements for the council to make sure you follow the charter in approving the definitive agreements when the time comes, but also joining the team with Rice Hospital Board and the Rice Hospital Board's attorneys that have been working on this deal much longer, obviously, than any of us or than this firm that you'd be retaining. Each firm said they were comfortable doing that. I think, having discussed with the mayor and the city administrator, we're comfortable that when we work to define the scope of the representation, we can emphasize that this firm will be coming in, in a cooperative spirit with the hospital board, will be coming into a supportive role. But at the end of the day, the city council is the party to these agreements and the party that needs to be approving the agreements, has to be confident, and I think you need an independent opinion from a qualified attorney that practices in this area, that, again, your interests are being protected and that the terms are fair. Taking this step, in my view, is a way to prevent a situation where the deal gets all but finalized and brought to the council, and then issues become apparent that the council would have that maybe result from the council's different perspective than the hospital board. So this is an effort to, again, avoid that situation, address issues now on the front end, hopefully for a smooth process along the way. So, again, the motion that I would recommend to the council tonight, again, after consultation with the mayor and the city administrator, would be that the city retain the law firm of Cutec Rock to represent the city in the negotiations with Centra Care, and to direct the mayor, city administrator, and myself to work with the firm to develop a written scope of work for presentation to the council and approval at the next meeting. And with that, I certainly would be happy to answer any questions.
I'll intercede on that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to proceed with the motion as outlined. Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe it's money well spent to retain a good, independent legal counsel on a transaction as big and important as this, so there will be financial considerations relative to one another. Were there any disparities in terms of financial obligations for these firms, or are they all pretty, working in this line of work and to this caliber? Are they all somewhat similar?
That's a good question. It's something I actually meant to address in my remarks, but when you get into firms of the size that it takes to focus on healthcare systems, transactions, obviously, you were talking about firms that have higher hourly rates. This firm, the lead lawyer, I think the hourly rate was about $440 an hour, and the Minneapolis attorney who would be involved was at $350, I want to say. And they were not the highest. I think they were kind of right at about the midpoint of the firms that we talked to.
Okay, thank you.
And there were some firms that were substantially higher than that. There was one firm that was substantially higher than that. Councilmember Nelson?
Just a clarification. Early on in your comments, you stressed the importance of making sure that we had someone that was familiar with Minnesota and those types of things. However, if I heard you correctly, the person that would be working with us, that would be coming out of Omaha. So I'm curious with why we were selecting someone that is out of state, and then, as it relates to the rates, will we have extra expenses because we're working with someone from Omaha versus the Minneapolis area?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, as far as the attorney being located out of state, it's a national practice that the firm has. I do believe that attorney stated he has experience with transactions in Minnesota as well as many other states, Colorado, Missouri in particular. As far as will the expense be greater because the attorney is in another firm, it certainly shouldn't be on the front end. I mean, I think the first step for this attorney will be to review documentation, probably have some consultations with other attorneys involved, which obviously can take place by phone. At this point, I would not anticipate there would be a large added expense in having an attorney from outside of Minnesota.
I know there was a lot of due diligence looked at finding a healthcare attorney, so you're comfortable that we interviewed enough attorneys to make this selection, based off from the conversations that took place regarding what our goals were?
Yeah, as a city attorney, having participated in the calls, I think you'd be in good hands, honestly, with any of the firms we spoke to. And certainly, I think we reached out to four firms, we had extensive conversations with three of them. I think that was extremely illuminating for the three of us that participated, so I don't have any hesitation in supporting the recommendation for this firm. We went through a list, a longer list at the beginning of that, and some were not able to contact, or were not able to take the representation, and we learned that right away. So, yeah, I have no hesitancy in supporting the recommendation.
What we found in going through the process is there are some firms that, when we contacted them, they were unable to ethically represent us, and so they told us that upfront, and they said they had a conflict of interest and were asking to be removed. So there were more firms that we had talked to than we really spoke with on the interview process, simply because of that piece. And in this business, a lot of those, a lot of those webs are interwoven. Councilmember Alvarado?
Mr. Scott, can you read the first part of that resolution that you recommended, please?
Yeah, simply, what I'm recommending for tonight would be the council pass a motion to retain the law firm of Cutec Rock to represent the city.
Correct.
In regards to the negotiations of the affiliation between Rice Hospital and Centra Care.
Well, why wouldn't we consider working with, or naming ACMC on that, or is this premature?
We could certainly, I think it's probably assumed that that would include ACMC. The only reason I only listed Centra Care in the recommended motion is because the letter of intent that the hospital board entered into earlier was only with Centra Care, even though I think it, you know, contemplated that Centra Care would have a separate LOI with ACMC as well.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
So the second part of what you said you would do next shouldn't be a part of this motion with how we will determine what the scope of work is that we're asking them to do. I guess I have a concern about just how we're reaching the point to provide direction to the attorneys.
The second part of the recommended motion was simply that the mayor, or, excuse me, that the city council direct the mayor, the city administrator, and myself to work with the firm that the city would be retaining, Cutec Rock, to develop a written scope of work to bring back to the council at your next meeting for consideration and approval.
So that's part of this initial motion?
That's part of my recommended motion, yes.
Okay.
Seen in hearing, no further comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Meskey?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The only thing I would, that motion does, oh, that resolution does pass, I'm sorry, motion does pass. The only thing I would recommend that if council, if you have something you want to see in that scope of work, please forward that as quickly as possible to our city administrator, so that can be included in discussions that happen. And we want to bring this recommendation back to you, and we're kind of on a time-sensitive timeframe here, because the hospital board is looking to address us in the first part of September, and they, we would like to have our council there as well. So if we get, if we get all this worked out and back to you for the next meeting, then our legal counsel on behalf of the attorney representing us would be at, would be present at that meeting as well. So if you have concerns, please get those to our city administrator. Next, we have our public hearing. Mr. Peterson, our planning development director.
Mayor Kelvin, members of the council. Public hearing tonight is to consider a utility vacation request from QuickTrip Inc. of La Crosse, Wisconsin. They've purchased property on the east side of town, and it's the old Senex Harvest Estates property, and they also purchased two properties to the north of that site as well. One of the lots behind there that they purchased is encumbered by a utility easement that has been unused. The public and private utility providers were notified of the vacation request, and because no one had any services in the easement, there were no objections or issues stated with eliminating the easement. The easement is necessary because QuickTrip plans to develop that site for semi-parking and stormwater retention, and the utility easement is not necessary for any future development in that area. It's a recommendation of staff that the council adopt the resolution vacating the easement as proposed.
So?
Is this a public hearing?
So, I didn't open the public hearing. I'm being reminded that I didn't open the public hearing and ask for comments, so. So is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I'll move it to the council table. We do have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
Second.
And it has been seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Meskey?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Schwantes?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Did I miss a hand over on this way? Councilmember Christensen, did I miss you?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Next, we have a recognition for retirement for Jim Worder, who has been with us for a number of years in a number of different capacities, and I'll call on Ike Holland, our city administrator, along with a number of other people to make some presentations. So, Sean Christensen, our public works director, to start it off.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and I'm actually going to do the least amount of speaking, so I know that excites most of you, but I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gower, Public Works, or wastewater superintendent, rather, who has a short few words to say. He's worked with Mr. Worder the longest, and so at this point, I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you.
Mayor Kelvin and members of the council, just like to recap a little bit about Jim Worder's time with the city of Willmore as, or out at the wastewater plant. Jim was hired in December of 1989 as a wastewater operator. In June of 1992, he was promoted to assistant lab tech, and in December that year, he attained a Class C operator certificate. April 93, wastewater laboratory analyst, Class 1 certification. In 1994, he participated in a MPCA-sponsored lab support committee to help other lab technicians improve their skills and efficiency and confidence. In 1995, he was promoted to the lab tech at the wastewater plant, and also that year, he attained the Class B wastewater operator's certification. In 1998, he received the MPCA Laboratory Excellence Award. 2010 was a pretty busy year for us, as we moved to, out to our new wastewater plant. So Jim was responsible for qualifying and certifying the new wastewater treatment facility lab and equipment, and also to comply with the NELAC requirements. It's the environmental laboratory accreditation requirements during startup of the new facility. During that time, he was actually running two labs for a small amount of time, both at the old wastewater plant and the new wastewater plant. As many of you know, regulations have gotten more strict as time goes on, and Jim's been very, very proficient in keeping up with all the requirements as a lab tech and dealing with the MPCA and meeting all those requirements. I guess some of his other interests, he was a volunteer firefighter for 19 years, 10 months. He has told me that that was one of his most rewarding times, as he really enjoyed the camaraderie with the other firefighters. He was past president of the Fire Relief Association, past president of the Fire Department Some of his hobbies, fishing, carpentry, woodworking projects. He enjoys vegetable and flower gardening, and I guess, just in summary, I really want to congratulate Jim on his retirement, his retirement, and his many years of service at the wastewater plant. I know he's looking forward to spending more time with his family and grandchildren. We will certainly miss him for his attention to detail, his proficiency in keeping the lab in great order, and making, you know, all of our other jobs much easier with all of his advice and hard work. So with that, I guess I'll turn it over to Ike.
Well, Jim's been here over 27 years, and I've been here three months. So, I don't know you, Jim, but you know what? I do know 27 years. 27 years, 19 years with the fire department, didn't have enough to do, I guess, but that's the kind of person, I wanted to get up here today because that's the kind of employees we have here, and I don't think they're recognized enough, and that's one of the things that I'm up here tonight, is I wanted to recognize him, even though I don't know him. But I just heard that record of performance. It seemed like every year, he was striving to the next level. He was winning awards. He helped with the new plant that we have out there. That's what we need in this organization. That's what I'm going to try to reward people for those kind of type of efforts. We've got a small certificate of appreciation. This next week, we're going to have a little ceremony for him, so people can come by and say hello and congratulate him and sign his card, if you haven't done so, or if you'd like to bring a card, I know he would appreciate it with some of your thoughts. And I'm going to give him his card and his certificate, and Bridget's going to take his picture, we'll put him on Facebook, hopefully it'll be in the paper. We need to start making sure that people are in the paper here also. So I can't say enough, but like I said, I do know what it means to work for an organization for over 20 years, but never in the same place. So that takes a lot of dedication, at least from my perspective, and I want you to know that I appreciate it and I understand your dedication, and so I hope you enjoy your retirement because you certainly did earn it, and you've earned my respect. So thank you very much. Can we have a round of applause for?
Jim, do you want to make some comments?
Thank you. Yeah, 27 years, it's a long time, and I've seen a lot, a lot of changes. Fire department, yeah, a lot of changes, a lot of different chiefs. Wastewater plant, we're on our third superintendent, two different plants, so, yeah, a lot of changes. All I can say is I'm just really thankful to have been employed by the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jim, on behalf of the mayor and council, I want to thank you for your years of service as well, and one thing that a lot of people in the public don't realize is you also take the samples out at the lake to make sure that the swimming beach is good, and you also help advise when we should turn the aerators on to make sure that the water quality stays good for our fish, and so there's a lot of stuff that you did behind the scenes that nobody knows about. And our community is a lot safer today because of the work that you've done and the service that you provided, not only on the fire department and emergency scenes and things like that, but also in your day-to-day work. So thank you very much from the bottom of our hearts for all the work that you did, because you've been a tremendous employee, you've been a good friend, and you're, as Ike said, your retirement is well-deserved, so go forth and prosper and have fun. Now, we'd really like you to spend the whole night with us, just so you can see how riveting this is, but if you choose to leave, we understand, so. Thank you again very much, appreciate that, so. Next, we have a report from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, Mr. Bradley Peterson. Mr. Peterson?
Mr. Mayor?
There was nobody for open forum.
All right. Oh, there I am, hot dog. Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Bradley Peterson. I'm an attorney and lobbyist with the firm of Flaherty and Hood in St. Paul, and as you know, we do the association management and legislative advocacy for the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, which the city of Willmore is a longtime member of. We try to get out every year and visit each one of our cities, or as many as we can, and give you a sense of what we did on your behalf and a little bit of look out into the future. And so, just as a reminder, the CGMC represents 90 cities across Greater Minnesota, working specifically in five issue areas, local government aid and property taxes, economic development, transportation, annexation and land use, and environmental regulatory and funding issues. And I know there's a number of newer members of the council, and so as you look or think about the landscape at the legislature and how we, what we do compares to the League of Minnesota Cities, we focus on issues specifically from a Greater Minnesota perspective, taking a very proactive take on all of those issues that I mentioned. And so if you've got, imagine a teeter-totter with the league in the middle. On one board, you've got Minneapolis-St. Paul and the suburban communities, and on the other side, balancing it out, you've got the CGMC. And so at the Capitol, when there are issues that affect Greater Minnesota cities, the coalition is your voice there. So as I said, we try to get out and give you a sense for what happened in the last legislative session, give you a little bit of a taste of what we did on your behalf. I'm going to focus most of my comments on local government aid, transportation, and environmental issues. So going into the 2017 session, of course, we had an election which changed the makeup of the legislature, moving it to all Republican. of the legislature, moving it to all Republican in terms of the House and the Senate, and of course, we still had Democrat in terms of Governor Mark Dayton. There was a lot of unfinished business that had to be attended to. In addition to, this was the year just to do the next state budget for the next two years. They had tripped over a bonding bill, capital investment bill, at the end of last year. They typically do bonding bills in even number of years, big bonding bills, and by big, I'm talking 800, 900 million dollars, a billion dollars. In 2016, the legislature failed to do that. Also, for a couple of years in a row, the legislature had failed to pass any kind of tax bill, which is usually where local government aid is dealt with. And additionally, for many years, we've had an ongoing conversation about transportation that had been unresolved. As you, I'm sure know, you've had folks in both parties who are fired up that we have to do something about transportation, we've got to find new money for transportation, but then there's been significant divergence in terms of how to actually accomplish that. The other dynamic this session, in addition to the unfinished business, was the fact that we had a $1.65 billion surplus going into it. So the state had some money to play with in terms of, of the state budget and priorities. So the budget forecast that I mentioned, $1.65 billion, not million. As one would historically expect, Republicans favored significant tax cuts and investment in transportation. The governor was favoring additional spending in education, and then also finding other dollars, namely gas tax for transportation. That was the dynamic. And that tension was what sort of dominated the discussion throughout the legislative session and up until and past their constitutional adjournment deadline. They had to go into a couple of days of special session just to get everything done. So our goals, and if you've been sitting in your chairs for a couple of years, you know that for a number of years, we've been looking to get back to the 2002 level in local government aid. Going into this session, we were still 45 and a half million dollars short of that. That's not inflation adjusted, that's simply where the appropriation has been. So we're trying to get back to about $564 million a year. The appropriation for 2017 was $519 million. That was our goal. Also, passed Greater Minnesota Infrastructure and Bonding Bill, $167 million for Clean Water Grant Loan Programs, money for the Greater Minnesota Business Development Public Infrastructure Grant Program, which I'll talk about in a little minute. We spent a lot of time on regulatory reform as it related to MPCA this year, and additionally then, ensure that the final transportation package, whatever it is, whatever funding mix they landed on, included two priorities for Greater Minnesota Cities. One, quarters of commerce funding, which we'll talk about in a little bit, and then also funding for city streets. And then we also worked on a number of items related to economic development, workforce housing tax credit, more money for job training, Job Creation Fund, Minnesota Investment Fund. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on those items during my presentation, but if you have questions about those at the end, certainly, please feel free to, feel free to ask. So LGA, where it stood, as I mentioned, 2016, there was no tax bill. It got line item, or not line item, it got pocket vetoed by the governor because of a $100 million drafting error that would have cost the state quite a bit of money, and they chose not to go back and do it. It was an unrelated thing to local government aid, but they had $20 million in that bill for LGA for, that would have been for 2017. As I said, we introduced legislation to get back to the 2002 level, and the way that we did it would have been sort of a stair step of half the increase in 2018, half the increase in 2019. We, since the Republicans are in control of the legislature, sought Republican co, or chief authors in the Senate. We had Senator Bill Weber from the Laverne area, who's a former mayor, as our chief sponsor. And then in the House, Representative Paul Anderson, who represents a district that's sort of along the 94th Quarter, between St. Cloud and Alexandria, Melrose area, that, that sort of area. We had bipartisan authors in both the House and the Senate, lots of Republicans, lots of Democrats, suburban metro, a good mix of folks supporting those initiatives. The governor, to open things, at the beginning of January, with his budget, proposed a $20 million increase in LGA. So as we went along, it was sort of a bumpy road. Of course, everybody does their posturing, everybody lays out their initial priorities. In the past, we have seen some bills introduced that would undermine the local government aid program through various means. We didn't see a lot of that this year. There was some, but not a lot of that, and none of them necessarily were taken terribly seriously. And so I think from terms of the tone of the discussion around local government aid, this year was actually better than years in the past have been. The original Senate bill had $12 million in one-time money, which meant they would have added $12 million to the appropriation for 2018, and then in 2019, the appropriation level would have gone back to the 2017 level. Now, that's fine if you're spending your LGA dollars on one-time items, but, you know, as a property tax relief program does not necessarily make a lot of sense. The House, in their initial tax bill, did not have any LGA in it. By the time, though, we got to, towards the end, the legislature, the bill they sent to the governor had a $6 million one-time increase in local government aid. That got vetoed for a number of reasons, but the governor did mention the lack of permanent LGA funding as one of the reasons. And so the final tax bill does include a $15 million increase, which obviously is much lower than what we would have wanted. Remind you, we're gunning for 45 and a half million over two years, but it is a step forward, it is something moving forward, and it is permanent and ongoing, to the extent that any of these things are permanent and ongoing. So the LGA funding goes from $119 million to $534 million. Since 2013, the LGA appropriation has actually increased by over $100 million. There was a big increase from 13 to 14, and then a modest increase from 14 to 15, flat the last couple of years, and now $15 million. Going to the history for Wilmer, you can see the zigzag up and down, the flat years, 10, 11, 12, and then the big increase from 13 to 14. And so in terms of this year's proposals, what each one would have meant for the city of Wilmer, the blue is current law, had a meteor come and hit the Capitol and the legislature not been able to meet, the blue for 18 and 19 is what you would have gotten. And so even you would have seen, you know, a slight increase from 17 to 18, just because of how the formula works. Some cities go up a little bit, some cities go down a little bit. The green represents the CGMC proposal, our 45 and a half million dollars over two years. The red was the governor's $20 million proposal. The orange is the final bill that the legislature sent to the governor, the $6 million in one-time funding. So you see a little bit of an uptick and then a downtick. And then the purple is the final certified amount that you should expect to receive next year and that you can start to, to budget off of. So that's the, the LGA back and forth, and kind of where we landed. So again, not everything that we were hoping for, but given all the back and forth, given the need to go into extra innings, just to get a state budget done and to get a tax bill done, remember, they don't have to do a tax bill. In 2015, we saw that where they just couldn't agree, doing the regular state budget was hard enough, so they shelved taxes, they shelved transportation, and didn't have a tax bill that year, they didn't have a tax bill last year in 16 because of a clerical error essentially. And so just getting a tax bill at this point with the current environment is sometimes kind of a, an accomplishment. One other item that I'll mention in the tax bill before I move on to the bonding bill is if you look actually in the insert here, this graph, or this sheet, on the bottom there, there is a graph entitled "State Business Property Tax." One of the other items of the tax bill, the CGMC actually supported, because it's good Main Street property tax relief, was an exemption from the first $100,000 worth of value on the state CI tax. As you recall, as you know, the state initiated a commercial industrial property tax in the early 2000s. It's indexed to inflation, or at least was before this legislative session, and it raises almost $900 million a year. One of the things that the legislature did with that tax is basically use some of the surplus to exempt, buy down the first $100,000 worth of value. And so it's essentially a $700 benefit for property taxpayers across the state, if your property is valued at over $100,000. The other thing that the legislature did related to the CI tax, and I'll talk about this a little bit towards the end, is I mentioned that it was indexed to inflation. They took off that indexing, and so now it is a flat amount. And so into the future, it will reduce state revenue collections going forward in terms of what had been, would have been anticipated had that indexing for inflation continued. Any questions on local government aid before I move on? And certainly, as I'm going along here, if you've got questions or thoughts or comments, please feel free to interrupt me, jump up and down, it doesn't matter to me at all. I want to make sure your questions get answered. As I said, one of the other items was a bonding bill. The coalition, you know, typically with bonding bills has three priorities, or at least had three priorities this year. One, to make sure that whatever money is being spent, that a good and fair share of it goes to Greater Minnesota. And then two, more specifically, we were supporting $167 million in money for wastewater infrastructure, clean water infrastructure, as you know, and as you see in communities across the state, upgrading wastewater treatment plants and water systems, either because of they are simply aging, as many of them are in Greater Minnesota, or in response to new regulations, can be very costly. And so through our advocacy the last several years, we've been able to put pressure on the administration to put more money into these programs. We were supporting $167 million this year. And then $15 million for the Greater Minnesota Business Development Public Infrastructure Grant Program, BDPI for short. And what this program is, is it started in the early 2000s, again initiated by the coalition. And what it does is it's run through DED, and it helps pay for the public infrastructure costs of business expansion. And so a lot of communities have used it as they've been building out their business parks to provide the sewer and the gutter, the streets, all of that sort of thing. And it pays up to half of the costs of those infrastructure improvements capped at $2 million. And so from time to time, the bucket for that program, and it's an exclusively Greater Minnesota program, needs to be refilled, and it's usually refilled through the bonding bill. The governor recommended, for his part, $21 million. We had a $15 million price tag in the end. What they ended up doing was $12 million for that program, and then about $116, $117 million for the Clean Water Infrastructure Grant Programs. I think one of the questions will be, you know, because 2016 was supposed to be a bonding year, they tripped over themselves arguing about transit in the metro area, didn't get it done, got it done this year. One of the questions will be is, since next year is an even-numbered year, will they do another big bonding bill to kind of get back on track? And then they'd be back on their normal cycle of big bonding bills in even-numbered years, smaller bonding bills to address emergency situations and some emerging issues in odd number years. That is the history. Back in 2004, when the legislature was unable to pass a big bonding bill, they made up for it with big bonding bills in 2005 and 2006. So that's the history. Who knows what will happen? I do think, if I had a hunch, if I had to guess, I do think the legislature will look at another sizable bonding bill in the next legislative session. I know the House Capital Investment Committees are out touring. The chair of that committee, Representative Erdal, is certainly talking, like he wants to have a sizable bonding bill. And so there will be another opportunity then, again, next year, hopefully, for continued investments in some of these infrastructure items that are so key for our communities. Transportation, as I mentioned, everyone was sort of tripping over themselves to talk about transportation and wanting to do something about it, but not a lot of agreement on how to do it. Again, for their part, the Republicans in the legislature wanted to use a sizable amount of the surplus, as well as bonding, to fund transportation needs without raising new revenue. The governor wanted to raise new revenue, either through gas tax, or he talked about tab fee increases, that sort of thing. The landscape on the whole discussion shifted, though, pretty quickly, when early in session, the governor kind of backed away from his position and basically said, "Well, probably going to end up doing it the legislature's way anyways." And so at that point, in terms of, of the transportation discussion, the die was cast, and then it was just a matter of filling in the numbers. As I said at the outset, we had two priorities: quarters of commerce program, which helps fund interregional corridors that are choke points in terms of commerce, Highway 23, Highway 14, 169, some of those types of roads. And this program was created in 2013 because there was really no other way to fund them. And so from time to time, the legislature puts money into the quarters of commerce program. We were arguing for sizable, year after year, appropriation into that program. The legislature, what they ended up doing was $300 million one-time. And so the money is usually split fairly evenly between the metro area and Greater Minnesota. One of the things to watch is that they did do some changing of the criteria in the statute in terms of how MINDOT makes decisions on those. And so I think we're going to have to watch carefully here from a Greater Minnesota perspective to make sure that our quarters of commerce, Highway 23, Highway 14, et cetera, are getting their due consideration in that process. And if they don't, then we're going to have to go back to the legislature and change the criteria to make sure that they do. The other item that we worked on related to city streets. No matter where we go, it seems that we hear that city streets need attention, and cities don't necessarily have the resources to, to give it their due. Cities over 5,000, of course, receive state money. Cities under 5,000 don't get any money from the state. A couple of years ago, the state created a program for small cities that they funded on a one-time basis. We, the coalition initiated legislation that would have funded cities both over 5,000 and cities under 5,000, with $25 million apiece. As I'm sure you can imagine, as the discussion goes at the legislature, oftentimes, it's the little guy that seems to get the most sympathy. The legislature put in $8 million a year for the next two years for small cities, didn't do anything extra for the larger cities. So that's going to be an issue that we're going to continue to work on. One, to make that small city program permanent, but then also to do something for the larger cities, which do get some state money, but do need some help, yes.
Okay, back to the corridors of commerce?
Yeah.
How long do you see that funding?
Well, I think-
Did you say it was a one-time?
Yeah, so it was a one-time allocation. So a couple of things. It was a one-time allocation for $300 million that MINDOT will appropriate here over the next year. There was $25 million put in on an ongoing basis, year after year, in cash, which will help for those projects that aren't quite shovel-ready yet, for them to do the engineering, the land acquisition, some of those things. So there is a $25 million that goes in every year, but the big infusion from the trunk highway bonds was the $300 million, which is one-time. And so in order to make progress, you know, just, I was talking to Mr. Beckman earlier today, you know, just one of the segments on Highway 23, you're talking about 50 to 60 million dollars. You're going to need pretty significant infusions of, of money, year over year over year, to deal with a lot of these quarters around the state. Does that answer your question, or?
Kind of, other than, I was, I thought you had said that if the allocation wasn't, that we felt it wasn't done fairly?
Well, the-
We could go back. I'm thinking, if it's a one-time thing, how are we going to have the opportunity to go back?
So they gave MINDOT $300 million, and MINDOT in statute has criteria. The next year, the legislature could give them another $300 million. It's one of these programs that gets refilled from time to time. And so, you know, I expect that because the needs will continue, and because of the $300 million that they put in, certainly don't meet the needs across the state that have been unidentified, that there will be more pressure in future years, and certainly will put it on to put more money into that program. But this first $300 million, or this next $300 million, like I said, they changed some of the selection criteria. And so as MINDOT is making their selections of what to do with that $300 million, that's what we'll be watching carefully. So we don't know, maybe it'll come out positively, but we're being, we're being wary. How about that? Environmental regulatory issues, I'll spend a little bit of time on. In addition to the, just the needs for funding, for upgrading and, and dealing with, with regulations, we want to make sure that every dollar spent on clean water initiatives is being spent well. And so watching MPCA over the years, we've had some concerns along these lines. And so we had a number of pieces of legislation this year that would have held them do a little bit more of account, or created a little bit more transparency, created a little bit more opportunity for cities to participate in this process around making standards. So a couple of examples. First off, when MPCA creates rules or new water quality standards, they have the option of initiating an independent scientific peer review. So they've got their internal scientists, but they can also say, you know what, we want to make sure that there's a second look at this, and so bring in a panel of, of folks from the outside. They don't have to do this. One of the things that we were requesting, or that we put into legislation and passed through the legislature, but was ultimately vetoed by the governor, was a requirement that if a group of cities, during the water quality standard development process, requested that MPCA initiate an independent scientific review, that they would have to do so, that they'd be required to do so. Or during a permit process, if the city of Wilmer was getting a permit for their wastewater treatment plant, and you didn't necessarily feel that the science that was being applied in that permit was correct, appropriate, made sense, you would be able to request of MPCA to get an independent scientific review. Those efforts were squashed by the MPCA and the governor. We were able to pass them through- We were able to pass them through the legislature but not ultimately get past the governor's veto pen. Ironically, however, after the legislative session ended, MPCA Commissioner Stein issued a directive to his staff that when they are doing new water quality standards, they will do independent scientific review. And so even though we were not successful in getting it into statute, we were able to change their practice somewhat. Again, that's going to be one of those things that we'll have to actually watch and make sure it's working the way that we would think that it's working. Another issue that we often see is with unadopted rules, and that has to do with MPCA creates a standard, and then when it gets to the permit level, that standard is applied differently than what the standard that went through the public process is. We had legislation that would have prohibited that practice. Again, we were not able to get that through the governor and the MPCA. Myself and one of my colleagues met with some combination of the MPCA Commissioner and the governor's office 13 times on these environmental regulatory issues, and were not able to move them, though we got to know each other pretty well. Final thing that we were able to do is get cities a little bit more time to review draft permits, which is especially important for smaller cities as they, you know, get a draft permit from the MPCA. They don't necessarily have a lot of staff. City councils maybe meet only once a month. They need a little bit more time in order to respond to MPCA on some of these things. That we were successful in getting into legislation.
Who oversees the MPCA?
Well, it's, you've got the MPCA Commissioner that's appointed by Governor Dayton.
I mean, so the legislature has no, they don't pass the rules that the MPCA comes up with? It's just an unelected body that comes up with these, and they're enforced?
So they have significant rulemaking authority and authority to set standards. Now, the legislature can always review these, but they tend to be loath to do that. One of the things that you will often hear from legislators is, "Well, I'm not a scientist. You don't want me, you know, looking at some of these things." And so what we were trying to get through our efforts was just a little bit more of a scientific look, or an opportunity to get a second opinion on some of the science. It wouldn't be something that cities would probably execute all the time, but there may be times where it might have been appropriate. And so, yeah, the MPCA does have significant authority in terms of setting water quality standards and setting rules, all subject to their enabling statutes, of course, and subject to, you know, the funding from the legislature and that sort of thing. But it was very interesting, you know, these environmental issues tend to be very emotional for people, and rightly so. And it's, what I found was, and what I think has been interesting about it, is it's difficult to have a really honest, straightforward conversation about, is what we're doing at one level really going to impact or improve the water quality? In some cases, the answer is yes, absolutely, and we should do it. But in some cases, we know that it won't necessarily. But because of the way the Clean Water Act works, oftentimes municipalities are the only lever that the state has to move when it comes to regulating. And so, you know, our position has always been, obviously, we want clean water, but we also want to be good stewards of public dollars to ensure that the dollars that we are spending, both from the state and that are being spent by local residents and businesses, is being well-spent and is actually contributing to enhanced water quality. And that's been the drive and the gist of what we've been trying to do. Yes?
Were some of the regulations a knee-jerk reaction to the Flint, Michigan incident?
No, these have been longstanding regulations. You know, the Flint, Michigan thing, you know, was, I guess these are all sort of, you know, slow-acting man-made disasters of sorts, but the Flint, Michigan thing is very much of a different sort. And the regulations that we've been working on, have been longer-standing, have, in many cases, been impacting those communities that discharge to rivers and streams, and, you know, have a lot of non-municipal impacts in terms of agriculture and runoff that are the issue. So it, I would say that it's separate from the Flint, Michigan type of scenario. So going forward, potentially choppy waters ahead. You know, one of the things that I talked about was, you know, transportation. They spent a significant amount of general fund money in terms of transportation. The tax bill that they passed, the cost of that escalates over time. And so when we went into the budget-setting process last February, for the current biennium we had, or the next biennium, we had about a $1.65 billion surplus. Now, the way they do their forecasting does not take into account inflation. And so if you were to actually take into account inflation, you'd really have about $540 million. And then for the next biennium, they were projecting at that time over $3 billion, almost $4 billion surplus, but really, because of inflation, you're looking at more $650 million surplus. And so that's before the state did this current budget. Just a couple of the budget items that grow significantly over time are taxes, transportation, health and human services, and K-12 education. Transportation, that's general fund spending, which they did not necessarily do a lot of before. But by the time you get to 2021, you're looking at over $400 million a year of general fund spending. On the tax bill, the red, you know, they did a couple of things that will, over time, significantly reduce state revenue collections. Social Security tax break, the commercial industrial property tax break, a whole host of other small things that add up pretty significantly. And then, of course, you have health and human services and K-12 education that do continue to grow over time as well. And so match that with just the recent experience that we've had with state revenue collections in terms of the last, this is the last quarter of the last fiscal year. You know, you did have a couple of down months, and you totaled those up, and you're looking at over $100 million under what was projected in terms of revenue collections. Now, it's hard to tell, looking at just a month-to-month sort of take on it, because there are significant variations month-to-month in terms of state revenue collections, but this does sort of look at a trend. And the July numbers came out just recently, and they, again, were below forecasted. And so while the state is in relatively good fiscal health, we still have a $2 billion reserve fund, which is the highest that it's ever been. You know, I do think that as we look forward here, we should not necessarily be surprised, especially given some of the uncertainty out of Washington, DC, if we are looking at a bumpier outlook in terms of the state budget two, three, four years from now. You know, we had a panel of legislators at our conference in Fergus Falls, and we asked them about this, and they, kind of to a person, said, "Well, it's probably going to be okay." But it was not an enthusiastic "it's going to be okay." And so that's something to keep an eye on. So lessons from the session, divided government and the current political climate do make it very difficult to get a lot of things done that I think we all agree need to get done. Your being involved is instrumental. Coming down to the legislature, testifying, being in contact with your local legislators, participating in the Coalition, it does make a difference, does help move the needle. We do a lot in the media in terms of advocating for our issues, and we are in the media almost more than any other advocacy organization across the state of Minnesota, guaranteed. And so that type of work is vitally important. Also, I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Nelson for her service on our board, and was elected by the membership to be our second vice president for the next year. And so we really appreciate your sharing her time with us. She makes great contributions and represents the city of Wilmer very well. Challenges for next session. It's a short session, starts February 20th. They still have to be done by the third week in May. Should be a bonding year. Will the legislature get back on track with that? That's one of the big questions. Nothing really has to get done next year. There is not any pressing issue from a fiscal standpoint that will force them to get anything done. Now, they should do a bonding bill. Hopefully, they do another tax bill that includes some more local government aid funding, but they don't have to necessarily do anything. In the future, are we looking at deficits, supplemental budget next year? Hard to say. And then, of course, it's an election year. Every member of the House, all 134 of them, are up for election, as is the governor. And one of the roles that the Coalition plays during election season is to educate candidates. We send out a packet to every candidate on CGMC issues, explain local government aid, talk about transportation, talk about capital investment, talk about some of these environmental regulatory issues in districts where there is either an open seat, or perhaps a hotly contested race. We'll hold a candidate forum in cooperation with the local city, and so we do five or six of those a year. And then we do engage with the gubernatorial candidates. Starting this fall and into the winter, before the parties even select their final nominee, we'll invite any serious candidate in to come and meet with our board and give us their vision for Greater Minnesota and an opportunity to chat for an hour or so. And then in the fall, likely, we will be hosting a candidate forum. We did this four years ago in the city of Rochester in coordination with the chamber there and the Rochester Post Bulletin newspaper. We were the only municipal, the only local government group to host a candidate forum that was part of their official sort of rotation that year, and so likely we'll look at doing that again. And policing the discussion on these candidates, I think, is vitally important. Already, there have been candidates that have been out saying things that are flat-out wrong about local government aid, that are disparaging about local government aid, and so we've already been engaging with them on an individual level in terms of setting the record straight. And I think it's a very important function of what the Coalition does during the campaign season. Finally, upcoming events. We've got our Fall Conference coming up in Alexandria. This is our more policy-oriented conference. This is where we'll set our agenda for the next legislative session. Legislative Action Day, where we bring all of our members down to the Capitol in March to get briefed on the issues, go out and lobby, and then enjoy a nice steak dinner and some fellowship at Mancini's Steakhouse afterwards. And then our Summer Conference next year is going to be in Mankato, and that's, again, where we celebrate our successes, recognize those members of the Coalition and those members of the legislature that have been especially impactful, and then do some business in terms of setting our budget and electing officers for the next year. So with that, I very much appreciate your time and attention, and I'd be very happy to take any comments or questions.
Council, any comments or questions? Councilwoman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for all the information. We've got kind of overload tonight.
Yeah, it's been a long evening. I agree.
Just a quick, what year did LGA start?
So the Local Government Aid Program started in the early 1970s, about 1971.
Oh, in the '70s. Okay, I thought it was later than that.
Yep.
Okay.
And it's gone through many different variations since then. At one point, when it was first started, even before kind of the official start of local government aid, what happened was counties got a bunch of money, and they got to decide what cities got it. And then the legislature wisely put a more formal formula into statute in the early '70s.
Okay, that was it. Thank you.
Bradley, I just want to thank you for coming out to Wilmer and talking with us. The information you bring is always timely and is always good information. So thank you for what you do, representing Wilmer down there. I know that you and I have spoken many different times, and I just also want to echo compliments to Councilmember Nelson for serving on your board. She's serving on your board, I believe, now this is your third year, correct? And so she does a great job representing us and attends your meetings and stuff like that, so I appreciate that. I would just like to comment a little bit on LGA, because LGA is a crux for what happens in Greater Minnesota, in particular for the city of Wilmer. And when I put my first budget together as mayor, when I was elected, we tried to put a budget together without LGA. And it doesn't work, folks. It just doesn't work. There's no way you can do it. And so that's one way that we can contain some of our costs. Another thing is, is that two weeks ago, we had Representative Baker here, and we talked a little bit about the disappointment we had that he didn't promote or push LGA a little bit better. And you and I talked over lunch about this today. And so certainly hope that you can continue working on LGA, get that done, get that moved to the top where it needs to be again. You know, like I told you at lunch, you know, if we could have gotten the governor's number in, it would have worked a lot better than where we ended up being, but at least we moved a little bit from where the first proposal was. So thanks for your good work, and stay in touch and let us know if there's anything we can do to help you guys as well.
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much again, and have a great rest of your meeting.
Thanks for your comments. Okay, next we will have the consideration of Highway 23 Coalition membership. Bradley, you may want to stick around for this one.
I am indeed.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Beckman, I see you have your right-hand person with you as well.
That is correct. I'm Aaron Beckman, EDC. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The Highway 23 Coalition is respectfully asking that the city of Wilmer become a member of the Coalition for 2017, 2018. As you're aware, the Coalition's been seeking state funding to complete the two four-lane gaps on Highway 23 between Wilmer and I-94. Recently, the Coalition has made an effort to be more organized and focused. The Coalition has elected officers, established a budget and membership structure to encourage business and government partners to be involved. And as you know, Wilmer is one of the largest outstate cities without continuous four-lane access. I went back and had DED run a new run of how many transportation-related businesses are in this region, and when you include Stearns County, there are 1,138 transportation-related businesses employing 30,000 employees that would directly benefit from improvements on Highway 23. Accessibility is required to attract and retain manufacturing jobs, businesses, and skilled employees, and often is a requirement for businesses. What are the benefits of joining the Coalition? I look at three of them. First, the city would be proactively planning the future of the corridor. Second, you would be positively impacting the safety, the economy, and quality of life in West Central Minnesota, including support for additional capacity, that is four-lane capacity and passing lanes. Third, you would have a seat at the table, exercising leadership in policy development, advocacy goals, marketing efforts, and projects. What have we been doing in the last three weeks? We've approached nine out of 11 cities along the corridor that are over 500 population. Please report that the city of New London and Spicer have committed $1,500, and we've received those monies. Painesville, we'll be looking at next week, whether it be $1,000 or $1,500, but they look pretty supportive. Cold Springs will be considered on August 22nd. Connie will be going to that one. Richmond on September 6th, Clara City on September 12th. Tomorrow morning, I will be heading to Stearns County, making the same pitch in terms of encouraging them to be part of the Coalition. And so we've been having a good response. Also, we've approached three out of the six counties, and when I'm talking about counties, I'm referring to Stearns, Candy Ojai, Lyon, Renville, Chippewa, and Yellow Medicine. Businesses are also starting to step up. Today, this morning, I received a nice email from Randy Dooley, and Dooley's Petroleum will be a platinum sponsor at $1,000. That's very good. Gold sponsors at 500, GME, that is the concrete company in North, in New London, will be a gold sponsor at 500, as is West Central Tribune. So we're starting to get the business community also involved. So I'd be happy to stand for any questions that you might have.
Councilor, are there questions that you have, or is anybody in the position to make a motion to handle that? Councilwoman Schwantus.
Mr. Mayor, first of all, thank you, Mr. Beckman, for your work and effort on this. This has obviously been a long-term project, and I would make a motion that we approve membership to the Highway 23 Coalition at the advocate level of $3,000.
I'll second that.
Most of them made and seconded. Councilmember Mesky.
How long are we anticipating the need for the Coalition, until the project is completed, I would assume, or?
Well, in terms of forecasting, you know, as Bradley was alluding to here, it's always challenging to predict what the state of Minnesota may be doing in even one year's time, but I would imagine it will be going on for a number of years. That's why we're structuring it so that we have partners going forward.
Councilwoman Alvarado.
I believe it would be advantageous that we approve the advocacy level. We want to be that regional city. We've got the energy and the leadership, and I think we should just keep on encouraging it, because we, quarters are like roads, are not rivers like rivers, and where do people go? They go to the rivers to start building and stuff, so I hope we get on board with this.
Councilmember Schwantus?
Aye.
Alvarado.
Aye.
Osment.
Aye.
Mesky.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Vagerly.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution does pass. Thank you for all the work, and Connie, thank you for your work as well. I know you're working behind the scenes on this as well, and thank you for your leadership that you provided to our community, so keep up the good work. And we will look forward to our next meeting, where I hope we continue with positive information. You know, I think one of the things that was asked is how long is this going to continue? The first section from New London to Painesville, so already, but the second section is not yet. And so the first section, we all know that if the governor had signed the bonding bill last year, that it would have been done, it would be in the ground right now. But he didn't sign it, so that's water over the dam. Take the river analogy there. And we just have to keep pushing forward, so thank you, Counsel, for your support, and thank you, Aaron, for your good work as well.
Thank you very much. And if I might just do a quick plug, we will be having a large group meeting on the 28th of September, and we'll be holding that at Working Breakfast at McHale's at 7:30 in the morning. And then on October 13th, Friday the 13th, we will be having Commissioner Zelli fly in, and we'll be having an event there, and more details to follow on that. But that's the first time we've been able to get him recently out here, so we can hopefully make our case.
Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the consideration of preliminary final plat North Creek second edition. Planning Development Director Peterson.
Mayor Kellman, members of the council. Lakeland Partners has filed a subdivision plat, a replat actually, for a portion of North Creek addition. What they want to do is take three lots and make them into two lots. And because of the simplicity of this particular plat, we've moved it through the planning commission into the council with a preliminary and a final concurrently. It's really nothing more than a lot split in a combination at this point. Everything's in place for the development that's being proposed out there, and it's the recommendation of staff that the council approved the preliminary and final plat as presented.
So moved staff's recommendation.
Most of them made and seconded to approve the consideration of the preliminary final plat for North Creek second edition. Bruce, with the 7th Avenue folks that were in front of us, and I know that's residential and this is commercial, but how does this street actually function in comparison to what a normal city street would? I understand that this is a PUD, so... And I don't know if a residential PUD and a commercial PUD is the same or not.
From a legal structure, they pretty much are. But in this particular case, this is a little bit unique because it is a private street that actually connects two public streets. And it does get used by the public, though the owner does have control over traffic on that street. It's never been an issue, traffic has never been an issue. You'll see that the lot is shown as an outlot. That is actually the right-of-way for the private street, and that's similar to what we see in private developments for residential units as well. So this is maybe a little different because it's longer, but what's unique about it is that it does actually connect to public streets, and that's something you probably don't find that often with the PUDs. Usually, those are more self-contained, and they consist of one or more cul-de-sacs.
And there's no curb and gutter on this street, correct?
There is no curb and gutter. But there is infrastructure and water and fire hydrants for fire protection, the same as we require any other place in town.
Thank you. This is a simple motion. Motion been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, the consideration of preliminary plat for his first edition. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Kellman, members of the council. His first edition is a plat being filed by Dan Gessman of Spicer. It's a subdivision of six parcels of land into two lots and four outlots on the old Mills Auto property on South 1st Street. The outlots are planned to be used for access and stormwater retention, and one of the lots will be for the new Dairy Queen restaurant, and the other one to the south will be sold for commercial development in the future. The property to the north of that will be the site of the other QuickTrip project that will be coming through the planning commission here in the next couple of weeks. The planning commission has reviewed the plat, and they've made several recommendations for changes regarding easements, hydrants, screening, and the usage of shared outlots with ownership, having some conditions and some documents filed that deal with ownership and use of those properties. It has been approved by the planning commissions, and it's the recommendation of staff that the council approved the preliminary plat.
So moved.
Second.
Most of them made and seconded to approve the preliminary plat for his first edition. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Would you just please review? It's very difficult to see this map, so I see Outlot A, which appears to be a street, Outlot B, C. So where is the location of the Dairy Queen? What's Lot 1? What's Lot 2?
Lot 1 will be the location of the Dairy Queen, and south of that is Lot 2. Lot 1 includes more than just that light area that you see there. That's the southerly portion of the parking lot at the Mills facility. And the outlots are to the west of there, to the left of there. You can see the outlot for the street or the public access curve through there. And, yeah, this isn't the best diagram to view, but specifically, those are the differences. Lot 1 is to the north, Lot 2 is to the south, and the outlots are to the west or to the left of that.
So the location of this would be south of 19th Avenue, 1st Street, south of the Wells Fargo, and then would be north of, what is it, Terrace Lane down there?
Terrace Drive.
Terrace Drive?
Yes.
Okay.
And the QuickTrip will develop north of Lot 1, south of Wells Fargo.
That'll be the closest to Wells Fargo?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Additional discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. That motion does carry. Next is council direction on the Civic Center master plan. This is something that the council tabled, so the council would have to take it off the table to discuss it. Is there a motion to take it off the table?
I'll make that motion.
Motion been made to take it off the table? Was there a second that I didn't hear?
I think Ron was making it.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to take it off the table? Sean Christensen, our Public Works Director, will you present this to staff, please? Or to council, please?
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council. Hopefully, by now you've received, what I've passed out is the first page of the RFP that was produced, and as you can see, asking for proposals by May 26th of this year. I've also called up the CAR form that, in front of me, anyway, that was presented in June 19th of 2017, in which we had collected proposals at that time and gone through a selection process, and presented a findings or a recommendation to the council of the firm that we, as staff, recommended the council choose to do this master plan of the Civic Center complex. Since that time, as you know, the master plan concept has been tabled, and so it's back on your plate for consideration. And I can answer any other questions you may have. Keep in mind, excuse me, if staff is asked to do this again, do an RFP process, my recommendation now would probably be that we would need to start over, since it's been three months, and that's a significant scope change when it deals with potentially pricing, but absolutely timing of the master plan.
Okay, so the council did not get a copy of your CAR report again, but we had it the original time when it was tabled, so...
Correct. That was the June 19th meeting.
Correct. Right. And so what you're saying is basically that the timelines wouldn't be in effect any longer because they'd be outside of the scope of that? So you're recommending a total reconsideration?
Well, that's correct. I'm not sure it's fair to the consultants involved to have them wait three months and then come back and then say, oh, by the way, can you do that project for us now? Exclusively, or inclusively, rather, all three presentations or proposals presented a plan that would have been presented to the council for approval of a master plan by the first of the year, or around the first of the year. That will not happen now. My guess is it's going to be early spring if we were to go back even to these three consultants. But I think at this point, the fairest thing to do would be to send out the RFP again.
Okay. So council, maybe for our consideration is to, would be to direct staff to do the comprehensive Civic Center master plan, RFP, and then also then they'd bring it back to us for approval, I think is what we want to do, would want to see it again then at that point, so... But I don't know what council wishes to do. Council, is there any action you wish to take at this point? Councilmember Nelson.
I need to make a motion in order to discuss it, correct?
Generally, we'd like to have a motion and a second, but this is kind of out of the ordinary because, I mean, we did have the motion and the second. We did move it forward. And then what happened is, we tabled it because we wanted additional discussion, so I think we could take it for discussion at this point and not really need a motion or a second at this point because we had that action, and we could have discussion, but it would be up to the council if they wanted the motion first. But I think we could certainly have the discussion first.
I guess I'd like to ask Mr. Christensen, when we look at...
Go ahead, let's have the discussion first.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'd like to ask Mr. Christensen if he sees the goals of this plan as the same as it was when we did this originally.
Councilmember Nelson, yes, I do.
Okay.
What changes in the scope of the RFP is the timeline to present the information, of course, the public meetings that would be involved in creating this master plan, and potentially the price proposal.
So we could simply bring this proposal forward and ask for it to be updated?
That's absolutely an option. Are you saying the proposal from the recommended consultant?
I'm not sure. I was simply asking what the easiest way, if the goals remain the same, how do we move it forward in the most efficient so it doesn't get set aside again?
I think there's a number of options. Legally, I don't know that there's any obligation to go out for them again, but ethically, I believe that we should at least contact the three individuals and ask them to update their timeline and potentially price proposals. That would be my recommendation at a minimal.
So is it appropriate, then, to just make a motion to do that at this time?
You certainly could, right. Mr. Scott, there's no, I mean, the substantial change here, there's not a substantial change to the bid, other than the dates, correct?
Correct, Mayor, as I understand it. First thing to understand is this is a request for professional services, not for contracting work, so you're not subject to the rigid competitive bidding requirements. So it's common for cities looking for services like this to go out for RFPs. It's not a legal requirement to do so. In this case, I think the council legally has a lot of flexibility in how to approach this. You could simply, as has been suggested, request the three firms that submitted proposals originally to update those proposals. Legally speaking, there's nothing that would even prevent you from just proceeding with the firm that was selected, but I think the city engineers point that that might not be the fairest process, I think is valid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not a big fan of consultants. I think more should be done in-house. I mean, we've listed the goals of the comprehensive Civic Center master plan. We've listed them. Why can't staff? Why do we need an outsider to come in and tell us what we should do with the rest of it for our communities the next 20 years? And what is the cost of the consultant? What were the bids?
I think the low side was about $50,000 and went up from there.
Yeah.
I mean, certainly, the council has that directive to say we want this to be a staff-driven activity, but you have to remember, when we put this out, I mean, our staff, I mean, what were you down at that time, Sean? I'm sorry, Public Works Director Christensen, you were down at least two staff members at that point?
Mayor, I don't care what you call me, that's fine.
Sure. Want to be careful with that.
Well, I don't anticipate what you call me when you're not on camera, but... Again, this is a planning document, and so, yes, you've introduced a different type of conversation. Yes, I was down staff, still down one staff, but this is a planning document, this is not an engineering document. And the only planner we have on staff is Megan DeShepper, and I don't think this is necessarily her expertise. I would have to let her answer that.
I guess, you know, when we talked about this, the concern that I have is that the next five-year capital improvement plan that I've seen has the needs out there at about $4.5 million. And I think if we're going to make any changes, there's conversations that are going on in the community about a couple of different things, that I think we should be responsible to look at not just doing the improvements and ending up with the same facility, but to look at what are we doing that this facility will be better for the community for the next years and the needs that are out there. So I guess I'm supportive of doing this comprehensive plan before we just start fixing things out there and end up with the same facility. I think there are greater needs out there. I think the community is asking for greater things on a couple different ways. So I guess I see this as a responsible way to take a look at what should this facility be. Maybe instead of us sending those CIP dollars, we should be looking at a different way of funding this facility. And if the plan comes back, that makes some suggestions with that. Maybe it provides opportunities for different funds other than just using CIP dollars. I'll quit with that.
That elusive pen.
Yeah, sorry. My question still is, is a question, we've called it a planning document, is the priorities of the council, we still, it helped me differentiate this project from our other projects that we have there, auditorium, city offices, community centers, all those would need a similar master plan connected to them? And with some of those, we've asked, and our priorities in terms of the auditorium and community center, that you wanted to have public input on how we wish to proceed with those. I'm wondering if I'm hearing that from Councilmember Nelson, is do we need that? Are you suggesting that with a community center as well? Are there other functions of that that we're not addressing? I'm just wondering where this fits in, because all of those facilities, I would imagine, need to have a similar plan done with them as well. I'm just wondering if we do this one first, are we saying that this is the top priority facility? Or are we talking about maybe looking at all of these collectively?
Thank you. Just like to respond to that. We said the ice plant's a priority. That's going to be close to $3 million. So it makes that facility a priority if we're going to spend $3 million on it. And so, you know, what we do after that is up to us. It's maybe up to the community. Maybe it becomes a look at, do we look at local option sales tax? Do we look at other things that need to happen out there versus spending $300,000 on bleachers and other money on those types of things? So I see this as a plan that should take place before we invest $3 million in an ice plant, if there are other needs that are out there. You know, whether you talk about the curlers, or whether you talk about the group that's talking about a soccer, I believe it's soccer facility or something that somebody's talking about out there, not part of that, but there are things going on in the community, and I think we need to take a look at that land out there, and how is it best... I think we need to take a look at that land out there and how is it best used? And so I, I don't see this as a commitment for us, that this is the top of the heap, but I do think it's a commitment that we do the right thing before we just put money into that facility and end up with the same thing, and it's not looking at what the needs are 10 years from now.
Sean, was there, wasn't there a series of public meetings that was in the response back to you?
Mayor, members of the council, yeah, the RFP actually indicates that they'll provide for or allow for public meetings, and all three consultants that sent a proposal in had a minimum two or three public, public input sessions.
That's what I remembered, yeah.
I'm willing to make a motion. I'm not quite sure, again, what it's necessary to do as far as instructing you to review this proposal with the existing, is that, is that to update it, or?
I think, I think...
I would, I would make that recommendation that we just send it back out, have them update it and send it back.
The three respondents?
Yes.
All right, I will make that motion.
Motion made and seconded to contact the three respondents on the initial RFP and have them update their proposal, including timelines and costs. Good with that?
I'm good with that.
Counselmember Mesky?
Well, I would ask again, if we use those public meetings, we're in those original ones, that we retain those in there for that ability to maneuver, if you hear the public wanting to go in a certain direction, that we allow for that?
Sure, yeah. Additional discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Abstained.
That motion passes 701. Is that what you add? Next, we have consideration of Ozlo Meadows Special Assessments Public Hearing. Our city clerk, Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Ozlo Meadows Lot Sales require additional assessments for the 2005 Street and other improvements. The hearing is required to place additional assessments against any parcel pursuant to state statute. One lot sold in July of '17, and staff is requesting a public hearing be set for September 5th to take testimony from the new buyers and then certify the remaining amount against said parcel for five years.
Motion to set public hearing September 5th at 7:00 PM.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Next, we have special assessments, unpaid weed, grass mowing. Ms. Thompson, again, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, pursuant to Wilmer Municipal Code concerning the cutting of weeds or grass, and in the case of noncompliance, the cost can be certified as a special assessment against a property concern, and staff's recommendation is to set a public hearing for 7:03 PM on September 5th to consider objections to the proposed assessment for the mowing costs incurred.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor of setting a public hearing for 7:03 PM on September 5th for unpaid weed and grass removal charges, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, we have consideration of setting a public hearing for general nuisances and the general removal charges. Ms. Thompson, again.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, pursuant to Wilmer Municipal Code concerning the removal of a hazardous building, the cost can be certified as a special assessment against a property concern. Staff's recommendation is to set a public hearing for 7:04 on September 5th.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, to set a public hearing for general removal charges for a, the building officials' removal of the building at 810 Campbell Avenue. Discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion does carry. Next, we have the city administrator comments.
Mayor and council, I just want to give some information out as far as the budget and as far as Rice Hospital. They have requested a, a special meeting with the council members, and that is tentatively set at September 11th, and I say tentatively. Does that change?
September 13th, it's been updated.
Now it's 13th.
Council received that on Friday, I believe, right? Right. Yep, council received it on Friday.
And then on September 12th, we're looking at having a special budget meeting, that's in the evening. And then also, on September 18th, we will have the budget draft. So we hope to have copies out to the council very soon, so that'll give you about three weeks to review the mayor's budget. The next thing is that I received a notice, I'd like to get a consensus or a motion. Tonight Bradley presented to you about the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. They do have dues, and we are a due-paying member, and our dues for 2018 will be $39,615. So I'm assuming that we still want to retain our membership. The reason I bring this topic up is they also gave us another voucher for a voluntary assessment for Environmental Action Fund. And I would just briefly tell you that this is a voluntary assessment that will be allocated to a separate Environmental Action Fund to be used to participating in rulemaking and legal challenges to unscientific and unnecessary regulations. They have a formula for, for each person, each community's contribution at 35 cents per capita. They have down here $6,962. So, Mayor, that was one of the things we discussed, and so with your permission, could we maybe get a consensus or how to proceed?
So, so in our presentation, we had Bradley talked about the work they do on the environmental things. So it's a voluntary assessment that we would be asked to pay, and either we could talk about it tonight and vote on it tonight, or we could take and bring it through work session. But traditionally, we have not been a member of that, we haven't paid that. We pay our membership due, but we don't pay that additional fee. The other thing is with that fee, it can be paid out of the wastewater treatment fund under professional services, so it doesn't have to come on, under our budget, if you will, but it could come under their budget for a funding source as well. If council want to take that tonight, we could do it. I suggested that it come tonight, simply because Bradley presented, and if we want to act on it tonight, we can, or if we want to hold it off and bring it to a work session, we can do that as well. I don't see anything, so I think we'll bring it through work session.
I suggest we not do the voluntary assessment.
And make...
And you made a motion, or?
You can make that as a motion if you wish, or?
Sure, I'll move that we do not pay into the voluntary assessment that they're asking That's been our history.
I'm wanting to make sure I wait long enough this time, can you tell? I'm learning. Enough? Okay. Dies for lack of a second. I think it might be best to bring it back to a work session so it can be talked about. Counselmember Nelson?
Mr. Peterson and I met with Sean Christensen today to talk about environmental. He also has had a conversation with Jim Gower to take a look at this. I think it would be beneficial to have some additional conversations about what other communities are doing, those types of things, and have it be brought back to us as a reason why we would consider doing that initial assessment. I think it would also be good to look at what other communities are participating in this, and to have a better understanding of some of the environmental things that are going on. And so we sort of started that process today with Sean, with Mr. Christensen, to start that, and I think there's a little more homework to do to see where Wilmer's at and where we're not, and the things that the coalition could do for them. So I'd like to see it brought back, and I would communicate with Mr. Peterson that this was brought up tonight, and that perhaps there's some additional things that would help us to make that decision.
Anything else, Mr. Holland?
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, for the mayor's comments, the thing that I would like to make the council aware of is I have Janelle working on our open boards and commissions, and so that will be coming either through the city administrator's notes, or it'll be coming to your next city council packet. But one of the things that the council has asked for is when there's openings on boards and commissions, that you're made aware of it, so I want to make you all aware of it. There will be openings, that'll be coming this fall, and there are some people that will be reappointed if you guys so approve, but I will be recommending them for reappointment. But there are also other positions that'll be open. And so she was working on that over the last week, and we talked this, this morning, and she's not quite finished with that yet. So that'll be coming to you. So if you have people that are interested in serving on boards and commissions, please let us know. One thing, we do have an opening on the planning commission, and we have openings on the board of zoning appeals. We have a critical need at the board of zoning appeals. So if you know someone that wishes to serve on the board of zoning appeals, please get them to Janelle, fill out an application, so that it can come to the council for review. Counselmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I noticed when reading the utilities minutes, they had the members on there, and when their terms were up, there were three of them on the terms up in 2016. Did they get reappointed, or?
Yeah, they were all reappointed. They probably just haven't updated that. Right, they, they have an updated list, right?
Okay.
Ike, can we check on that in the morning? With Janelle? I'm sorry, or have Janelle check on it? I know that there was a discrepancy, and we worked through that, I thought we had that all fixed last year, but maybe we don't, I didn't notice that, so.
See, they are updated. I mean, if it's just the paperwork, because I was at the meeting where they did reappoint them, so that did happen.
Sure. Okay. And then I was also going to just mention that the, that I will be presenting the budget to the council on September 12th, and that will have a different look this year than what we had in the past. In the past, the mayor has done a more formal presentation, Ike has used a different style where he's been at before. So generally, by this time, I've had four or five meetings with the city administrator to talk about the budget. This time, I've only had one, and so that will be coming to you. We had a review, about a two, two and a half hour review on Thursday, so we've had, taken one stab at it, and we may take one more stab at it before the 12th, but there was very clear direction given. I think you will be very pleased with how the presentation will go this time. When they walked through the format with me, I thought it was a very comprehensive analysis of the budget, a more thorough analysis of the budget, but also addressed some of our things that got brought up in the audit today about things that we can do and fund balances that we can address. So I'm really looking forward to this new way to present the budget and just have an open mind. And as Mr. Holland said, you will get the budget prior to that meeting, so that you actually have time to review that, so that when you come to that meeting, you will be more prepared. And that was also a request to the council last budget cycle, is that you had an opportunity to be more prepared. So I'm trying to listen to what you're asking of me, trying to do a better job of getting the information in front of you, so you can make informed decisions, so. And I want to compliment both our finance director and our city administrator for their diligent work on that process. So I was, I'll have to say, all the budgets I put together, I was the most pleased with this one, so, Ike, thank you for your leadership on that, so appreciate that. Next, we have council members announcements. And we started with Julie last time, so we're going to start with Sean this time, so.
I have no announcements.
I don't have any announcements. I got a complaint, I received a complaint from a resident on Becker Avenue, and I said to call the administrator or Public Works Engineering about the seal coating. They thought they did a very poor job in front of his house, and they didn't fill the cracks, so. I don't know if anyone called you?
Yes, Councilmember Fagerly, we've had the conversation, a number of conversation, conversations with that individual.
Okay. Got it resolved then, or?
Yeah, the cracks are filled. What's, what's happening is, I'm sorry, the cracks are sealed, which is what the project is. Should be probably considered more of a crack seal project than a crack fill, because the way typical sections are typical, are, are set out on a lot of crack seal projects, if you look at it, that crack widens and narrows, as you will, if you will, during the year, based on temperatures. And so depending on when you look at it, that crack is not filled all the way to the top, and if it is, if that crack gets narrower during the year, and that sealant becomes above the surface of the, of the pavement, it can be scraped off, peeled out, or otherwise removed from that crack. And so most typical sections, when you look at plans and specs, show that sealant to actually not come to the surface within a quarter inch or so of the surface, and so it sometimes looks like those cracks are not filled all the way, but they are in fact sealed from water.
Was that just done, or was it done last year, or?
That one was done this year. The other thing we do as a standard practice within our Public Works is, in engineering, is we check on those a year later, and when the next contract comes through, and if there are some that need to be touched up, we do that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Counselmember Nelson?
I'll just follow it up with a thank you. Thank you for putting asphalt back down on Fifth Street Southwest, because I had taken a variety of complaints there, and I know that you worked on that to make sure that the company that needed to do that, did that, so I'll say thank you.
Yeah, and that was not us, but you.
I know that.
Welcome.
Wondering if we're going to continue our committee discussion at the next work session, or?
I'm almost thinking, and I want to talk to the city administrator, whether that is an opportunity to talk, but I wonder if that maybe should just be a separate evening, that we just discuss that on a separate evening? We had it on the agenda, as you've seen, for tonight, and we didn't get to it, reports ran long, and so, you know, we'd hoped to get to it again tonight, but it is on the list. Administrator and I have talked a couple times in the last two weeks about that, and how we want to move. I think one of the things you've seen tonight is a more, is a more thorough report from finance, and so that is the intent of, that we will be having these more formal reports that will be coming to you on a more frequent basis. And so that was one of the things that Mr. Holland and I had placed, put in place before the conversation started about that, but yes, we do need to just continue that discussion.
Thank you.
Well, Wilmer may have missed out on the solar eclipse today, but if you look up and you look to the south, southeast, southwest, you'll notice that we have a beautiful new water tower that's decorated and painted, and it's something to be proud of, and you notice some of the schools are putting up some new electronic signs that kind of accent our school system. So hats off to those projects. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Right. And I want to acknowledge, we do have the nurses here again tonight, so I know you didn't speak this evening, but we, we all sitting here have observed you sitting there, so it's not that we are ignoring you, we just know that you weren't on the agenda, but we want to acknowledge to the watching public that you guys are in attendance, so thank you for being here. With that, Councilmember Osmus.
Okay.
You were going, are you going to stop?
I just wanted to put a reminder out there that Going Green Event is taking place on September 9th, and that will be from 8:00 to 1:00 at Bill Taunton Stadium, and that's where you can bring your appliances, your scrap metal, your electronics, tires, car batteries, there may be a small fee for some of those items, but most, everything is free, so it's a good chance to clean up areas around your garage and to clean up our, our neighborhoods. I'm getting some complaints on that. And speaking of Bill Taunton Stadium, I also just want to acknowledge that it's the end of the Stinger baseball season. of the Stinger baseball season, and just to thank the host families that took in the baseball players. They feed them, they wash their clothes, they drive them to practices and to the bus to catch games, and they open up their homes and their families to these young baseball players. And sometimes, there is, there's a benefit on the other end, and again, I got to experience that this last weekend. One of my, my third baseball players that we had taken in was drafted by the Pirates, and he got called up again last Friday, got to pitch, Stephen Bult, but then he went back down again. So they get traded up and down from AAA up to the majors, but how thrilling, how exciting, and we have that opportunity in our city. And I just, I just think it's great that we have that Stinger organization and the things that they do for the community.
Thank you. Anybody else that I may have missed or wanted to make a comment that didn't get a chance? With that, I'll entertain the motion. Tom move?
Second.
It was a made and seconded, we are adjourned.